All right, we will get started with the best part of the evening. And that's the opportunity to recognize some of our students. And first off, parents, grandparents, family members over here between Mr. Drost and Mr. Richard is a nice little pocket for a nice angle for pictures, video. And with that, we will start with the Rice Lake High School.
Good evening. I have the privilege.
You'll go up.
I have the privilege to honor Ariana Thomas this evening. She was recognized by Mrs. Strain and Mrs. Wright, her English teachers, for academic excellence and perseverance and resilience. Ariana has been a student in our English nine ABC course for the past three terms. From day one, she has consistently shown up with determination to be the best student she can be. Ariana is always fully engaged in every classroom activity and gives us 100% throughout the duration of each class. When placed in a small group or a partner, Ariana is a leader who has always kept her group on track to complete their work. Each student in our class recently wrote an essay about a book they read. Ariana did an amazing job using a sample essay to guide her work independently to write a strong essay entirely on her own. Outside of class, Ariana is in color guard. She plays the clarinet in the band. She competed at state level in forensics and she participated in drama productions at the high school. In addition to this, she has held the job at McDonald's since the beginning of the year. Ariana brings joy and energy into the classroom each day. We commend her for her dedication and growth, her ability to balance academic excellence with a demanding extracurricular schedule, and her positive presence in the classroom community. She is a standout student and we look forward to seeing all that she accomplishes in the years to come.
Ariana, you forgot the Big Macs.
Rice Lake Middle School.
I'm Mrs. Elliott and this is Mrs. Jerry. And we are honored to recognize Ms. Leanna Bollongia.
She is well deserving of this recognition. She has a heart of gold. She will be the first one to help another fellow student and always has a smile on her face. She volunteers for everything. She works well in groups and her leadership skills are seen not only in the classroom, but also in all other extra areas. We can always count on Leanna to be showing us the warrior way. Thank you, Leanna, for being a role model student. We are so proud of you.
All right, Hoggan Elementary, we'll start with Penelope.
My name's Craig Russo. I'm the third grade teacher at Hoggan and I'm really pleased to be here with Penelope. She's an outstanding student. I actually get two kids in my class here tonight. I got Landon coming up next with a different nomination. But Penelope is just amazing in class. She's a leader. It's been a pleasure to have her as a student. She's been a rock star all year. She works really hard, math, spelling, reading, writing. She's respectful. She's hardworking. She's helpful to anyone and everyone that needs it in my room. She represents the warrior way every day at Hoggan and we're just really happy to have her in our school and in my room. I'm really proud of you and way to go.
Hoggan Elementary.
Hi, my name's Kristy Thurs. I'm the elementary guidance counselor for Hoggan and Hilltop. And like to present to you Landon Myers. He is a third grader at Hoggan Elementary and I'm very pleased to present him with the student of the month. Landon is a great student. When I'm in the classroom presenting Second Step, he is respectful. He is a great listener. He loves participating and encouraging others to participate as well. He's very intelligent and mature for his age and he's a great leader for his peers. I'm very proud and honored to nominate Landon for student of the month.
Hilltop Elementary.
Sorry, this is not for short people. Okay. I would like to, well, my name is Andrea Jevney. I'm the ESL teacher for Hilltop Elementary School. And I have Eduardo here, who is a second grader. Eduardo is a very kind and loving student. He also has been having a tremendous growth from the beginning of the school year. His scores have really gone up and he's really put the effort. As an introvert, sometimes it's hard to be able to, you know, socialize with people and try to be, just connect with peers. And he's just done a tremendous job this year. He's really coming out of his shell and we're just so grateful to see that. Not just that social growth, but also that academic growth. So as far as the success that he's had in the classroom, he's also a privilege to work with. He's very respectful. He's very loving. He has got last two years of very tough situations and difficulties in his home personal life. But he has had the resilience and perseverance that he needs. So we decided that that was just what he needed. It was to be recognized for the great job that he's had. Eduardo es un niño muy inteligente. Es un niño muy dulce que siempre estaba pendiente de ser todo lo que necesita en la clase. Él ha tenido la oportunidad también de crecer no solo a nivel social, pero también a nivel personal y académico. Ha tenido un crecimiento bastante grande, sobre todo a nivel de matemáticas y lectura. Y hemos notado que a pesar de sus dificultades en su situación personal, él igual ha perseverado con mucha paciencia y con mucho amor. Entonces, por eso lo queremos reconocer hoy. Also, it's a true honor to recognize him on his noble efforts. Y es un reconocimiento muy honorable por poder tenerlo aquí hoy. Thank you.
I put my college Spanish to work. I think I caught about every seventh word.
Foreign language is a great app.
And Tainter Elementary.
Hello, I'm Tammy Wall. I'm a third grade teacher at Tainter Elementary and I'd like to recognize Aspen Marshall in the area of citizenship. Aspen is an outstanding classmate. Her hard work, kind thoughts, and bubbly personalities shine through in everything she does. She makes me smile every single day. Aspen consistently follows directions and is always willing to lend a helping hand to friends and help create a supportive classroom. Aspen is kind and caring to all students, especially those with special needs. Her positive comments to her peers when they are struggling or upset is one of the reasons that she is so well liked. Aspen is an awesome role model for her peers. Good job, Aspen. Proud of you.
And we have one more from Tainter.
Hello. I would like to have you meet Grayson. I almost did it again. Grayson has a brother named Oliver and it messes me up every single time. This one's Grayson. Grayson Swartow. He brought his mom and dad and his little brother Oliver. Even wanted to know if Oliver could come and join us. I'm like, meh. Grayson does well academically, math, science, social studies, language arts, all of that. He does well academically, but that's not why he's here. He's here because he is a good person. We have a little lunch bunch group that gets together every week. And it is made up of some kiddos that struggle a little bit to feel like they belong. Whether because of a home situation or the social skills that they have, they just find it a little more difficult. Grayson is the one that says, hey, come on. Our group has grown from four to seven, I think, as we're going along here. That's mostly due to Grayson. When the boys decided that our table was getting too full, they decided that they had to come up with a way, a fair way, to decide who got to come when. Grayson, problem solved with the rest of the kids and came up with a way that was fair for everyone. He is someone who has a huge heart and shows everyone else how to be a good person. So I am extremely proud to say that Grayson is a good person and will continue to be.
So I would like to congratulate all of our students that were recognized this evening. And to let you know that coming up, we will be having a drawing of all of our winners this past school year. And a few of you will be pulled out of a drawing and win a Chromebook. So good luck for the opportunity to win a Chromebook. And with that, we'll take a few minutes to let everybody leave that would like to leave, but you certainly are welcome to stay and enjoy the fun with the rest of us.
Not so scary now, am I? Congratulations. Congrats.
All right, we will get moving. We had no one sign up for appearances this evening, so we will pass through on that. And I would entertain a motion to approve our regular session meeting minutes from May 12th.
Sum up.
Second motion has been made. Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. The consent agenda, we have one resignation and six employment recommendations. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda has been approved. Next, we get into our opportunity to hear from our foreign exchange student.
And since she's the only one here, we need her to talk.
Really long.
You gotta fill in the gaps for the others.
Happy to have one of our exchange students. We have lots of things happening tonight. Track, last soccer game, and some of the families came to the United States, so they're traveling this week. So Katerina is here and she has a slideshow representing five outstanding students. Obviously, the commencement ceremony, they were there and got recognized and had a better environment because of you all here.
That's good. So, good afternoon. My name is Carolina and I'm an foreign exchange student from Italy. So. I think it's working. Yeah. It's like, show move it, so. Yeah, sure. So, yes, I'm from Italy, the country known for the good food and like for the slow lifestyle. I love traveling and like do new experience. My only rule this year was never say no to new experience. And like this rule helped me so much to have so many opportunities. So on the corner, you can see my families. My, my family is composed by five people. Me, my two bigger older sisters, and my parents, Giovanni and Margrazia. I love hanging out with my friends. In Italy, we always find new things to do and we enjoy hanging out outside for us, like, you know. Sometimes just stay home is not the best thing, you know. We like, like, go see new places and discover new stuff. Of course, like, I'm from the country where you can find like the beach, but also good mountains. I love go ski and hiking, but at the same time in the summer, I love enjoying the beach and the fresh seafood. And we have big cities like Rome with the Colosseum. I live in Pisa, where you can find the Leaning Tower. For who doesn't know Pisa, Pisa is like 35 minutes from Florence. So it's very fun living this in that country because like I can find everything, you know, like. And for go to the mountains from where I live is like four hours, but for go to the beach is like 15 minutes. So I really love that. Something about like, that we are very good now, of course, is the food. We have very high quality and fresh food. For me, like, when I came here, the food was a big shock because the food here actually tastes very good, but with the big difference of the quality for me was very hard at the start. Now I'm kinda used to it, but I cannot wait for go home and try my food. What about the school? I think the school is one of my biggest difference, like here and to Italy. So for us, the high school is five years and we go on Saturdays. So we have a lot of school. So we don't, we can choose classes. So every person in the school has the same classes every day all around, like from September to June. So we keep the same classmates for five years. That's why we are kind of big family and we kind of love each other so much. And I miss my friends so, so much, actually. In the corner, you can see me and my best friend. Last year, we had like, we were recognized for be the best student in the high school. And it was like a very, very good, important thing for us. In Italy, you can choose the kind of high school where you want to go. So it's very different from here. For example, in my high school, I studied business. So in my high school, you will not find science. You will find more math and economics, finance, and stuff like that. But like no chemistry, no physics, no science. So when I came here and I tried a little bit of all this stuff, it was kind of hard. What about my experience? I think, so I had the opportunity to came here through Rotary. So I changed my family every three months. My first family was Lipkes. My second one was the Bavra. And my third one, like my family of now are the Johnsons. I love the opportunity to change host family because I could live with like different habits and routine. I could experience more point of views, you know. Like when you are just with one family, you can see just that kind of stuff and not like different, like, different and new lifestyles. During my experience, I had the opportunity to travel all around the United States. And for me, it was like an honor, was so much fun. And doing this exchange year was not just like, some people they think, oh yeah, an exchange year is a vacation, but was at all not like that. Some moments were very hard where I had to, where I was alone, like without my family, without my parents. And I met, I had the opportunity to mature a lot. So I know that when I will go back in my home country, I'm sure that my family and my friends, they will see me so much different. I enjoyed the swim team and track this year. And that was such a good opportunity for make new friends and for, of course, live new experience. I, I could like, don't do like, so this year for me was not, was just not like an exchange year. This year for me was completely a new life. I made my home a new country and in two weeks, I'm going to back home. And I know that it's going to be so hard. I don't want to even think about that right now. Because yes, I'm ready for seeing my family and my friends, but at the same time, leave all the things that I made just by myself, without the help of anyone, I know that it's going to be very hard. But I want to say thank you to Rice Lake High School for hosting me this year. And I want to say thank you also by the other exchange students that tonight are not here. And hopefully the exchange students that are coming next year, they will have fun too. Yeah, that's all, I guess.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Your English is very good.
Yeah.
Did it get better while you were here or did you speak English really good before you came?
So when I came here, I had like a normal English level, you know, like a school English. When I came here, I had the opportunity to learn more slang and accent. My accent is still very, very strong, but I cannot really do anything for that because, I guess. There isn't a short video about my experience, but I don't know if it's work.
Are you gonna tell us who your favorite host family was? Careful.
I guess I can. Yeah. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, thank you for that.
Didn't have one other.
Thank you. One other video from, sorry, am I saying her name correctly? From Sorry, who couldn't be here tonight, so. Just a minute. What happened?
Muted over on the right there.
All right there. Sorry, I'll start over.
That's always fun to hear from students from other parts of the world. All right, next, we will be getting an update on the youth apprentice program.
In here, Mr. Erickson, I've got a. Thank you. One second. Okay, my mouse disappeared.
All right. Well, good evening, while Randy pulls up.
Hang on one sec. Yeah, my mouse is, not sure what happened there. And the touchscreen's not working.
Try the escape button.
Yeah. Try it. All right, one second. Wow, the whole thing froze up.
That's, that's my one and only maneuver.
Where's Marty? Oh, there we go. All right. Whoa, oh, now she's catching up. It did a whole, just a second. Just a minute. We gotta close some of these out here. Somebody hummed the Jeopardy tune. All right. We'll be all right. They'll follow it. We'll go with it.
Perfect. We're good. All right. Well, good evening. My name is Ryan Erickson. I am one of the tech ed teachers at the high school, tech ed and egg. Recently this year, I took over.
Sorry, can I interrupt? And the son of?
And the son of Ruth Erickson, the reporter here tonight.
I was wondering why we got Ruth after presents.
Now, I talked to her before the meeting, meeting thinking I was the reason she was coming tonight, but it was found out that there's a tour of the aquatic facility. So I don't think me being here had anything to do with her coming. Just to make that clear.
Ruth, you can stand up here like other parents.
So yes, I am Ryan Erickson, Ruth's son. It's my third year here at the high school. Teaching mainly tech ed, but a little bit of egg along on the side. But I was really excited this year when Kurt brought up the opportunity to take over the youth apprenticeship program. When I was a high school student at Barron, I was a youth apprenticeship student. And the biggest reason I got into teaching tech ed is I want to see students chase a career path, whether it's in construction or as an electrician or plumbing or even things outside of the realm of tech ed. That's what really is rewarding for me in teaching is seeing students have a plan and chase that plan after high school and us doing everything we can to set them up for their future career goals. And that's really what youth apprenticeship is. And so it's been a great fit. I really enjoyed taking over the program. So tonight, after I've essentially been running the program for about a year, I've made a few changes, a few updates. And so just wanted to present that to you guys here tonight. So for those of you not familiar with youth apprenticeship, youth apprenticeship is essentially an opportunity for high school juniors or seniors to pursue a job in their future desired career field. And we'll talk later on in the presentation about some of the career fields that our students have been in. We work with students and their existing employers, but also if I have a student, I know they want to, they tell me they want to go and pursue plumbing, I can help to set them up with an employer in that area as well. So we kind of work in both situations. So a few requirements, we're going to talk about kind of what we expect from our students, but also the employers that we partner with here in our community. So student requirements, there's just a little bit of documentation when we sign them up for the youth apprenticeship program. Um, so student requirements, there's just a little bit of documentation uh, when we sign them up for the youth apprenticeship program. Um, it really is a partnership between the school, uh, the student, their parent and their employer. So everyone knows what's going on. Um, and we really want it to not just be um, just a job to fill their time after school. We want it to be a career path that they're going down and have that employer agree to really train that student while they're on the job. Um, so some requirements for the student, obtain the signatures to sign up, uh, work at least four hundred and fifty hours with their matched employer. So if you do the math, um, that works out to about twelve weeks of full-time employment. So if a student really dives in over the summer, um, they can reach that goal. Otherwise, some students, if they're only working ten, fifteen, twenty hours a week, uh, sometimes it's spread out over a school year, which is perfectly fine. Um, throughout their hours, we provide two or three uh, skills evaluations. So that's provided through the state through the youth apprenticeship program. I'll send an evaluation with the student and their employer. Um, evaluates them on two different sets of skills, uh, employability. So are they showing up on time? Are they working well with their coworkers? Are they cleaning up on the job? Just basic skills that any employer would want to see, um, but then also occupational skills. Um, so for construction, it might be um, accurate measurement. It might be um, proper tool safety, things like that, um, that are critical for that career field. So two or three times throughout their youth apprenticeship, we send home these skills evaluations. They bring them back to me and we can have a conversation. Looks like we can maybe grow a little bit more in this area. You're doing awesome in these areas and our goal is to see them grow over the course of their uh, youth apprenticeship program. Uh, additionally, some students are required to do an OSHA ten course or first aid, uh, something that's relevant to their uh, career field. That's not required for all of them, but for instance, this year I had a student working in plumbing and HVAC and uh, that was a requirement to do the OSHA training for him. Um, additionally, to kind of complete that partnership between the student and the high school, they are required to take two high school courses that are related to their area um, of youth apprenticeship. So if that's, if they're going into plumbing, like the example I used earlier, maybe they're gonna take our home repair basics class and our construction class, because those are two relevant classes to their future uh, career pathway. Uh, and additionally, a new thing that I added this year, uh, we're really trying to have this as, not necessarily a club, but a partnership between all the students that are involved in youth apprenticeship. So we have monthly meetings before school, I'll bring in some donuts or something like that. And we'll meet, talk about how our different job placements are going. Are we seeing some of the same challenges or difficulties on the job? Are we getting enough hours on the job and just kind of talk through things and learn together, uh, which has been a really good addition to the program. The employers we work with, again, um, not just employ, but really mentor the student for that minimum of four hundred and fifty hours. Um, agree to pay the student, so it is a paid position. Uh, the only requirement is at least pay the student minimum wage. Um, participate in the skills evaluations that I talked about before. Um, follow all employment of minor laws. However, um, because the youth apprenticeship is a state-approved um, program, some tasks and positions are usually required people to be eighteen or older. Uh, because the student is a student learner, they are exempt. Um, and they are able to do some tasks on the job site that maybe otherwise might be limited. Uh, and also obviously provide a safe workplace for the student. So what's in it for the student? We've really been trying to grow the program and advertise um, why this would be beneficial for you. Um, and so a few things for the student. One, job placement and mentorship in a future career field. Some students may already have a job in a future career field, others we help, um, help them find that job placement. Uh, students can earn high school elective credits if they complete the entire youth apprenticeship program. So that'll show up on their transcript, um, if they completed youth apprenticeship. So that's an incentive for some students. Um, I've talked uh, back and forth with Kurt quite a bit about our work release program. Um, typically, um, if students are caught up on credits, they will only get work release for one term throughout the school year. But man, if they're caught up on credits, we know that they're in youth apprenticeship, they're learning things on the job and they want to continue to get hours on the job. Uh, we'll typically allow them to have more terms of youth apprenticeship. Maybe it's the afternoon, their whole senior year, if we know they're caught up on credits and we know they're doing some awesome things and learning on the job. So we allow students to have extra work release through this program. Um, students earn a industry-recognized skill certificate when they are done. Um, we include some incentives along the way and I'll explain how we pay for those um, coming up soon. Um, but for instance, students receive either a toolbox or a jacket or a hoodie when they complete their youth apprenticeship program. And if I have a student going into welding and they need, they need boots and a helmet and jacket and gloves and all of that, um, each student can spend up to two hundred dollars in supplies for their future career. I've had students um, buy scrubs if they're going into the medical field or better shoes that they need um, on the job site or whatever it might be, uh, but it's great for students to get some of the tools they need for that uh, career field and also take away some of that financial barrier that might be there. Uh, what's in it for employers? So uh, employers want to hire uh, motivated employees and motivated students. And typically, that's the makeup of our students in youth apprenticeship. Um, they're chasing that future career field, uh, which is what we really like to see. Um, so we know we're setting them up with good students. Uh, each youth apprentice student agrees to a minimum of four hundred and fifty hours. Uh, I've talked to a lot of employers and one of the biggest challenges is they'll hire a student and they might show up the first week, they might not show up the second day. And with this agreement ahead of time, we know um, that yes, all parties were agreeing, we're gonna, we're gonna put in this time commitment, we're gonna, and we're going to learn while we're on the job. Um, additionally, uh, youth apprenticeship holds the students to a higher standard. Um, we expect them to be leaders on the job, we expect them to be wanting to grow, to not, to not necessarily just be content with their entry-level position where they might start, uh, but want to grow and learn on the job and the skills evaluations help with that. Um, and additionally, long-term employment, I found this statistic on uh, the youth apprenticeship website, but about seventy-five percent of youth apprenticeship students are offered a full-time job with that employer when they finish the program. Um, and some students go on to a tech college or a four-year or many other opportunities, but we can see that we're setting up students in, with great employers that want to keep them around. So it's really has been beneficial for employers as well. Uh, some of the pathways, this is just a fraction of them. Um, lots of different areas that we can place students, anything from lots of different agricultural areas to different construction areas, manufacturing, engineering, uh, healthcare, pharmacy tech, physical therapy, graphic design, lots of different areas. Um, so constantly trying to pair students up with their interests with employers in these many different areas. Um, additionally, another benefit is for some career fields like plumbing, electrical, HVAC, masonry, carpentry uh, and telecommunications. Typically, people who are going into their career fields have to complete a registered apprenticeship program and youth apprenticeship counts towards that. So if that's what they're wanting, if that's what they want to chase after high school, they have a head start coming out of high school because they already have quite a few other hours in. Um, so that's a great, great start for students that want to chase careers in those areas. Um, funding, so part, an exciting part of this program is it's really self, self-funded um, through the state along with the incentives that we're giving the students. So each year, uh, the school district is eligible to submit a claim to CISA eleven. CISA eleven does a lot of the background work for us on this program. Um, and we submit basically all the expenses we've had over the year for youth apprenticeship. Um, the amount can vary each year, but the last few years it's been fair, fairly stable, around five hundred and thirty-five dollars per student is what we're eligible to get back if we've spent, spent that money. If we've only spent a hundred dollars per student, we're only gonna get that much back. So we really try to pour as many resources as we can into these students. Um, but it is limited how we can spend it. We can't be spending this money uh, to get new tools for the shop or things like that. Um, the only options for these funds is it going directly to the student to help them with their career field uh, with some of the equipment that I mentioned before. Or uh, it can go towards program expenses like our monthly meetings, um, or any compensation for the YA coordinator position. Um, but all that funding has to go directly back to youth apprenticeship. Um, in addition to that, we also get up to four hundred dollars for marketing and promotion of the youth apprenticeship program, just to continue to grow and, and raise awareness of the program. Um, additionally, on top of that five thirty-five, um, an additional responsibility that I took over this year is our CTE incentive grant program. Um, each year, our school district submits uh, the CTE incentive grant where we list all of our graduating seniors that earn some sort of certification, whether that be in solid works drafting, whether that be in CNA, whether that be in Microsoft Essentials. Any certification, including youth apprenticeship, can count and we can get up to eight hundred to a thousand dollars back to the school district for completing those certifications. So really, um, it's awesome to pour some of these resources back into those students to set them up for their careers. But as a school district, we also get some funding back. Um, and that funding we can pour towards our CTE programs. So it really is a great program for students and schools. Uh, a few statistics, um, and I'm continuing to try to grow this program each year. So last year before I took over, we had five students in four different areas. Uh, this year we had nine students, eight seniors and one junior. Um, the areas that we were in last year, uh, along with the employers are listed up there. So animal herd management, plumbing, electrical, pharmacy tech, collision repair and merchandising. Um, some changes that I've been working on in the past year is increasing that student funding. Um, that money is out there, so I want to pour that money in uh, back towards the students uh, and set them up for their future careers. Uh, implement monthly uh, student meetings, uh, just to hold that accountability and, and build that community between the students. Um, I've been sending out school-wide surveys, so students are starting to build youth apprenticeship into their vocabulary. They're starting to ask more questions about it. Um, they're starting to get excited about it when they know they're getting to be an upperclassman. I've had more and more students come ask me about it. Um, and then streamlined some of the checklists that I've created for students, which I'll, I think I have on the next slide here. Um, so some of the new documents I've made, um, previously, this youth apprenticeship coordinator position was held uh, by one of our guidance counselors, uh, but going from three counselors at the high school down to two, uh, we decided to shift that uh, to a teacher's responsibility. And it's really been a good fit for me in tech ed because I have a lot of students that want to chase some of these hands-on careers in class. Uh, so some of the things I've done just to streamline the program, the two uh, documents you see on the left there, um, students track their own hours. So each week I have them do a login there, they track how many hours they worked and some of their new skills they learned on the job, any new responsibilities that maybe they were added to their plate. Um, and they also can plan how they want to spend that two hundred dollars stipend of what they might need for their job. Um, students work through a checklist through the youth apprenticeship program. Uh, so they kind of see what needs to be turned in and what incentives they can earn as they complete the program. Um, and then that's the survey on the far right there. So what's next, um, as we continue to grow and continue to uh, build this program? Um, as we complete uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five youth apprenticeship uh, documents, I have a few students that are just finishing up their hours, still have to turn in some of their final documents. I'll be reaching out to all of the employers we worked with last year to thank them uh, for partnering with us and discuss if they're gonna be looking for students again next year. How can we continue to improve the program? Um, continued growth, uh, still continuing to promote, promote this program to our high school juniors and seniors. Uh, but also continued partnerships, continue to grow uh, with local industries and employers. Um, I've been reaching out this last month or more, um, to lots of different employers trying to set up some youth apprenticeship students for next year. Uh, just continuing partnering with, we have so many great businesses and local industry here in Rice Lake. Um, and one of my missions as a tech ed teacher is to be teaching the skills that those local employers want their employees to have. And youth apprenticeship is a great way uh, for us to get there. So continuing collaboration with parents, staff, the school board and our community uh, to continue to support students as they chase their future careers. So um, that's just kind of a little background between our, of our youth apprenticeship program. Um, kind of some of what I've been working on for this year. Uh, it's rewarding for me because this is why I got into education, is to push students towards their future careers. So uh, any questions? Yeah.
Well, first of all, I want to say you, you kind of blew me away with your presentation. I think it's something that, you know, was probably needed a long time, at least, you know, in the last decade or so. I have about two thousand questions for you, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you sometime when I get a chance and call you.
Sounds good.
It's very similar to what used to be called cooperative education.
Okay.
Uh, couple of the things that I would ask questions about. By the way, I love the fact that you're meeting with the youth and having donuts and it borderlines a club. Probably someday will borderline, you know, uh, well, it does now with other programs with the skills and what have you. And I'm glad I saw merchandising there.
Right.
Uh, but uh, are the parents involved anyway?
Yeah, so I always reach out to parents as I'm signing students up so they know, know what's going on. Um, and parents will reach out to me if they have any questions and concerns. Typically, um, a lot of the students that we get signed up for youth apprenticeship, they are pretty self-motivated students. They know what they want to chase. And so typically, I don't have to reach out to parents too often for any uh, concerns or things like that. I haven't had too many students' concerns on the job site. I always try to communicate kind of on the front end so they know what's going on. And then parents are invited uh, to senior scholar, senior scholarship and awards night. Um, and I was able to recognize our eight seniors this year at senior scholarship and award night. So um, there's not, I guess I haven't had a ton of interaction with parents kind of between the start and the end, but they have my contact information and they, they, they know kind of what's going on throughout the program.
Are you given any kind of an extended contract in the summer to help set up with the employer?
Right, so um, I'm still kind of working out the best, I'll say recruitment time. Um, Kurt and I talked me taking over this program over last summer, but I really didn't kind of jump into it until the fall. So I worked quite a bit in the fall trying to get some students signed up, but it's best if I can work proactively in the spring, get students signed up in the spring and we can count their hours over summer vacation. And so um, trying to do a little bit of that, um, still kind of working a, you know, summer contract. Um, I don't know, once I get students signed up for their jobs, there's maybe not a ton of extra hours over the summer for that, other than just the occasional check-ins on how students are doing. Um, but that's kind of been a, a line of communication that's been open between Kurt and I.
Do you know anybody that works for a newspaper that could write an article about your fantastic?
I probably could, I probably could, find someone, yeah.
Ryan, this is a big focus of our board is to really try to encourage kids to get job-ready and the trades and all that. So if there's anything you need from us, you know, let Randy or Kurt know and we'd love to support you any way we can.
Perfect, I appreciate that. Or I can maybe get an article in the paper about it.
Uh, Ryan, I love your enthusiasm. Is, it, it's a Wisconsin program, do you know any other schools within the closer area, region that do this? Or is this fairly unique for us?
Yeah, so actually, uh, we're kind of playing catch-up with a lot of other districts in the area. Um, I know when we've gone out and we've toured Rice Lake Wayne and Thomas with some of our tech ed classes, they're like, I have five Chatek students working for us and no Rice Lake students. Like, we gotta get this program going. And so um, there's some schools that they'll have, uh, they'll have a teacher that that's half their day is organizing youth apprenticeship and they might have thirty, forty students in it. And we're, we're still building towards that. Um, my goal is, now some, some districts, I will say, will place students in maybe any career area that will count. Um, and not that a job, uh, not that any retail job is not, uh, for some students, that is their career pathway that they want to chase, which is great. And I did have a few students in merchandising last year and that was a super great opportunity for them. Um, but really, uh, Kurt and I have had a few discussions about, I'm more concerned about setting students up in the right pathway with what they want to chase and have highly motivated students than maybe trying to set new records with number of students enrolled and things like that. I'm trying to make it a, a meaningful experience for the students that are in the program. So that's kind of been one of our goals.
Piggybacking off Don's question, is, is there a, something, you point there's a limiting factor, whether it's time, like you said, it takes a lot of time to do this and coordinate it. Uh, money or anything that is at sort of forefront of your mind that we can do to support this?
Um, I would say not, no, there's not too many barriers um, at this moment. I've been able to keep up with the program along with uh, my teaching responsibilities, so I wouldn't say I've needed uh, to change anything on that aspect. Um, I'm looking forward to this next year because the first year running the program, everything probably took twice as long as it will next year, just learning, um, learning the background, going to some of the trainings, um, learning that interaction with employers and what documents need to be signed and, oh shoot, we forgot to sign this document and things like that. Um, so I am looking forward to next year. Um, the hours that I put in, hopefully, even with more students, I think my hour requirement might go down a little bit now that I know how the program works. Um, but other than that, I think just continuing to uh, find local employers and continuing to build those connections. Um, once I've built that connection and I have. Once I've built that connection and I have, I have a relationship with somebody, I can go back to them and say, okay, do you want to, do you want, need any students in this career area this year, or this employer, or this employer? So just continuing to build those connections with all of our local businesses is probably the majority of the time I'm spending right now. Yeah.
Kids getting enough information on just how valuable it is to learn about career in tech ed, have a sort of a career or a side job where even if they go to college, they can earn money or how much money they can earn.
Right.
Shortly after they're out of school. Do they get enough information about that? Could that be integrated with the personal financial literacy, for instance?
I think it absolutely could, and I'm not real familiar with the curriculum in that personal finance class, but I know one kind of priority that Dan Buckman, my fellow tech ed teacher and I have been prioritizing is bringing up youth apprenticeship in our classes. For instance, he had one young lady in his home repair basics class, and I think at times she was kind of questioning why she had took the class when they were plumbing toilets and all this kind of stuff that she wasn't real excited about. But when they got to the electrical unit, she loved it. She just, she loved how everything worked, how everything came together. And she came up to me afterwards and she wants, I'm still working at finalizing a placement for her, but she wants a summer job, a youth apprenticeship going into next school year in the electrical area. And so I think one of the biggest feeder systems is Mr. Buckman and myself bringing this up in our classes, our classes that are relevant to a lot of the career fields that we work with in youth apprenticeship. So continuing to promote it in our CTE classrooms that are paired with the program areas, I think is probably one of the best ways to bring awareness.
So on a given day or week, how many classes do you have that are actual classes? And then are you given time for this?
Sure. So I, we have a, I teach three classes a day and then have a prep. So I've been doing the responsibilities of this pretty much before school, after school, or occasionally during my prep. There's a little bit of work on the front end and on the back end, getting students signed up and getting their final paperwork in, but throughout the majority of the school year, the hours requirement hasn't been overwhelming, I would say. So I haven't needed to have that discussion with Kurt about carving out some time during the school day. But as if the program continues to grow, like we hope it might, that might be a discussion we'd have down the road.
There might be kids that aren't signed up for a CTE class that if they knew more about the value of it, they might consider it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
All right. Thank you.
Awesome. Next on the agenda, we have the Athletic Code of Conduct, first reading.
I can tell you we didn't meet and he doesn't recommend any changes.
Oh, my buddy.
There we are.
There we are.
All right. Good. So then, no changes.
Changes.
So it'll stay as it was. We'll bring it back for a second reading to confirm that. And next, we have the 25-26 Elementary Handbook, second reading.
So our biggest things that we did were just making sure that our page numbers matched and the, from the front to every single page. So we, I think, got those all up to date. Also checked out the links, make sure that they actually took you someplace. If you clicked on the link, it wasn't just a blank page. And then we also made sure that we updated the dress code language on page 13, you know, with the board looking at that policy, wanted to make sure that it matched in there. And so we added a sentence in there with, "Students will not wear clothing that dangers themselves or exposes any part of their stomachs, chests, buttocks or undergarments."
We added that language.
So just added that in there.
Any questions?
Thanks for doing it.
Thank you. If no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the elementary handbook.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to any further discussion. Say none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, and the handbook has been approved for next year. Next, we have our Warrior Connection Committee meeting update. Miriam.
We actually have not met as a committee as a whole since last update. However, the areas of action, if you have anything to share on that.
But we do meet tomorrow morning.
We meet tomorrow morning.
Great, great. We've had a number of really good meetings and good discussions, and what we've been focusing on is areas that are low risk and don't require a lot of money and for which there's already, you know, some data or reason to take action. And some of these are the concept of a late bus or shuttle service for students at the middle school and the high school after school because we discussed how some students may not have access to transportation if they did. They might participate in after-school activity and thereby meet other people and develop relationships, which is, after all, what we're trying to do here. We talked about developing some sort of electronic survey to survey families to gauge the interest about how we could possibly partner with the Boys and Girls Club to have some sort of program with somebody staffing it at the high school. What, what clubs might attract people to stay after school and how many nights per week? And I think that someone was eventually going to talk to the bus company about the, whether they're interested in running an extra bus or not. And then we'd have to run it, I think, through the finance committee to see how much that would cost and whether we could justify that in the budget. And again, this doesn't have to be written in stone. If we feel it's reasonable, we could, we could do it, you know, for a year and see what happens. If the transportation's not used very much, well, we don't have to continue it for next year. So we have to be a little flexible. We think we want to recommend to the full committee that the full committee recommends to the board to investigate a tech ed and CTE expansion because, as I've probably already expressed to some of you, there are people from companies that are willing to come up here and give us a free evaluation of our tech ed program in terms of what type of equipment we need, what type of space we need, maybe even the logistics of it that Brian's involved with, you know, that eventually, if it really gets popular, it may become a little too onerous for one person. I did contact a person that I met down at Wasby, Randy, refreshed my memory on what the company was. It's First Technology, Inc. Ken's name is Larry, has he talked to you already?
He hasn't, but he's supposed to.
I'll, I'll stay on it to make sure he does. Let me know next. Okay, gotcha. Bob D. Right, I mean, that's a start, that's his main area, but maybe he could give us some advice on who we could maybe get to come and give us an idea of what the facility expansion would need if we expand our equipment. Anyway, we think it's, again, that's a thing that we can look at, we can study for hopefully very minimal cost to start with and develop a concept because after looking at Ryan's presentation, I think that that could be a big draw for us and attract a lot of students that might not be so thrilled about a purely academic path. And I think we can grow our open enrollment with that, too. I think we can become a hub, really a Cadillac hub for the, for Northwest Wisconsin to grow, to grow a tech program. Other information we talked about was investigating how we can develop, sort of use the power hour at Rice Lake High School as the middle school is doing, whether we need to compensate someone for a position like that. Discussing with the Boys and Girls Club, the possibility of an after-school program that sort of meshes with what I said about the bus program. Discuss the possibility of special and elite, specific awards for student leadership that incentivize and reward the really elite leaders. So a rare award, perhaps just at graduation, maybe a yearly award, something very special, not just, you know, $15, quick trip or something like that, although that would be very special, We talked about, thanks for refreshing my memory in this, enhancing the status of academics more to the level of sports, where we can get some elite academic awards as well. We talked about, and it's not exactly on here but an offer, how we can help the Warrior Leadership Team to procure resources and things for what they do, maybe facilitate connections with businesses where when Zach runs around shooting t-shirts into the stands, you know, he's more t-shirts to shoot or more whatever to shoot into the stands and have a business sponsor that. And then also, because of all the evidence that's already out there about cell phones, we would like to recommend to the whole committee that we start a discussion, emphasizing a discussion, a systematic discussion about whether we should head toward a complete cellphone ban during the day. Because of its connection with mental health concerns and bullying, and I know there are some benefits, but we have to remember what we're trying to do with this committee is we're trying to improve the mental health of our kids by improving their number of connections, their number of friendships, so that kids that, that are having problems don't fall through the cracks and get into something serious. And I know there are advantages to having cell phones, but I think we really have to study this because there are some serious problems with it, as I stated. And that's, that's just the discussion. Nobody, I really can't see a reason for not formally asking to start a discussion. So I think we'll be bringing that up for the whole committee tomorrow morning. Miriam?
Yep.
Our alarm goes off. And that, I think, is, can you think of anything that maybe I didn't hit?
You covered it well.
All right. That would be.
Any questions?
That one.
All right.
Kevin, I have a question about the Athletic Code. Can we jump back up real quick to that? I just, well, WIA just adopted the NIL rules. Does that need to be included in our Athletic Code? I mean, I know Miriam said they hadn't met this year, so I'm assuming it hasn't been.
What is it?
There, there is a policy. There is a paragraph in there about it.
Is there?
Yeah.
In the?
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of stuff.
Well, the NIL rules were just adopted, I mean, I don't even think they're going to effect until the, right now, end of May.
Right, the name, image, likeness piece. I don't know that that's in here. That's a good question.
Yeah, it's on, well, what about page 10 of 10? It says amateur status. It talks about, it talks about a student athlete may not accept blah, blah, blah. Student athlete may receive metal cup trophy valued $200, may not capitalize on athletic fame by receiving money, et cetera. That is not restricted for, not restricted from participating in NIL, commercial endorsement.
Yeah.
So there's something about it. Do you have something else in mind?
We'll, we'll just want to double-check.
A student shall not appear, a student shall not promote, compensation is not contingent on specific athletic performance, compensation is not provided by the school or persons associated with the school as an inducement to attend a particular school. So they're not supposed to recruit people.
We, we just want to make sure that's in line, in line. Yeah, I mean, it's, that's good stuff, but just, yeah. I think it's probably okay, but we'll just double-check.
And coming up in, in the much anticipated Wasby report, one of the things they recommend is that we develop our own policy for NIL, which.
Aren't we bound by what WIA decides, though?
Basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think, I don't think the committee's against meeting. I just think that he didn't recommend any changes and so we, we just didn't meet because we have to have this ready for the July 1 registration. But I mean, if we need to meet, we can meet.
And I, if, if, and I, I would say you don't need to meet if what we have in the amateur status piece there, you know, is in line with, with NIL rules, so.
Randy will check on that. And then we will move back in. Any questions on, no, we covered that already, no questions for Warrior Connection Committee. So next, we have the Curriculum Committee meeting update. We met on Tuesday, May 20th, and we had one item on our agenda, and that was the first year curriculum development for three new pilot courses, English 11, Technical Reading and Writing, which is taking technical reading and technical writing, which we already have, and making them into one course, and then communications course. And so Amy Pelley was there and presented for those three items, and we gave them the go-ahead to continue to move forward. And our next meeting will be June 17th.
Did you guys happen to have any discussion about whether a board member might be included earlier in the process in the future when they're looking at changing, making a major change to a curriculum?
That was not on the agenda.
And why would that be necessary, Phil?
Well, as I said last time, I, I think it gives a person more input when you're still at a stage in the process that a shift in direction.
As board members, what input can we give when we're, that's not our area of expertise?
Well, we're a board member, we're supervising.
Yeah. But our role is to decide policy and it is not to control what curriculum does on that side of things.
No, but we have to approve it, don't we?
We do, but our involvement should be, I think, as it is to review the policies and the curriculum that's being established and to ask questions and do all that. I don't think we should be involved on the front side of what our role is.
Okay, fair, fair point. But what I'm saying is how, what value does a concern at committee level or at the board level have when so much work has been put into it that it doesn't really make sense to change direction or backtrack at all? It's, it comes more or less a rubber stamp.
We still have the opportunity to review it and question it and go back to the drawing board if we don't agree with it.
Yeah, but that's, that's so.
It is not our role to do that on the front side. I totally disagree.
Well, okay.
I, I disagree. That's not our role as board members.
I'm not saying it's a primary role, but if, if you want to have a valid concern, actually, if there is a concern at a point where, you know, you don't insist on undoing everybody's work, the earlier you are in the process to ask the questions, the better. And when people ask questions, it generates ideas that people maybe haven't thought of. That's all I'm saying. So I understand where you're coming from.
Phil had brought that up, and we will, as a committee, have that discussion. And then if the committee feels that they want to have it look different than what we're doing now, obviously, it'll come to the fore.
But we're not going to start developing or selecting curriculum.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. All right.
So just to, just to help everyone on the board be more fully informed when it comes to.
Any other questions? All right, then we will move on to policy and Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting update. This is the first reading for the policy 344.43, which is promotion retention, that's the third grade and fourth, to fourth grade. That is Act 20. Policy 521.1, alcohol and drug-free workplace. Policy 533, certified degree staff recruiting and hiring, with the rule and the two exhibits. Policy 537, professional growth. 537.3, professional library, that one we're recommending to delete. Policy 538, evaluation of licensed professional staff. Rule, that policy and the rule, it was brought up that we'd like to table that and send that back to committee. So I would entertain a motion to table policy 538.
So moved.
With the rule, policy and rule.
I would second that.
Made and seconded. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed. We'll send that back to committee. And then Policy 620, the Annual Operating Budget, and Policy 662.4, the Self-Funded Dental Insurance Financial Reserves. And those are all for a first reading. So if there's anything you have questions on or would like to see potentially changed, please let Randy know, and we can have that discussion. So that is the first reading for those policy rules and exhibits. And really didn't have a lot on the legislative side that was really outstanding. So anybody have any questions? Okay, we will move on then to the WASB Public Policy Correspondent Update.
Okay. The budget process is just getting going, very preliminary stages. Not a lot of bills are coming to the floor, not a lot of new bills, so I don't want to repeat a lot of what has been said before. There has been one Capitol chat only because of Labor Day Weekend, caught the video update last week. So highlights, some interesting highlights on the legal side. The Wisconsin Supreme Court made a ruling in the vicinity of the Fair Employment Act where they ruled that you can't necessarily discriminate in hiring with regard to an arrest record, which on its face sounds pretty interesting. It seems that if a school district runs into an arrest record, the school district must not just rely on someone else's report. In other words, secondhand information to determine whether they're eligible for employment, but do an independent review. And Randy probably knows all about this already, so.
Yeah, exactly what you said.
Yep.
That's not the only thing.
With regard to WIAA and the new rules in the NIL, name, image, likeness, should have a school board policy addressing that, as Nellie just brought up. Perhaps look at putting it in the Athletic Code of Conduct, which we just talked about. Public records law, the interesting thing I learned there was that the public officials, in other words, we school board members need to be listed. And if there's a request for information which involves us, we have to be notified before the records are released. I guess I hadn't known that, but there are other things I don't know.
Colleen and I were just talking about that today, and that policy is up, records request is on our, on our next policy committee meeting, so.
Okay. With regard to the federal budget, the Senate passed a resolution to rescind the FCC rule that allows students to take mobile hotspots home. That, I guess, happened during mostly COVID, called the E-Rate Program, over concerns of a lack of regulation, I believe, of content that's available that way. So we'll see where that goes. In the state, there would, there was a rumor that there might have been a meeting with the governor on the 21st between the legislative officials and the governor to keep the budget process on time, but I don't know if that actually happened or not, because when I listened to this, this was the 20th. The legislative leaders want to develop a tax cut package that the governor will agree to, and the governor wants his priorities in K-12, education, UW, and childcare. So we'll see if they can come together and trust each other enough that they'll, both sides will keep their word. So that's developing. The Legislative Fiscal Bureau decided that tax collections are up a bit, but overall, I think there was about a third of a billion dollars less revenue than projected, but there's still a healthy surplus of over $4 billion. The bill that I spoke about a couple of weeks ago in the Assembly, AB 166, is a bill that would require higher educational institutions to collect various types of data from higher educational institutions about the cost of the institution and the benefits of the education, basically, how much a kid, how much a student has in debt when they graduate, six months later and five years after graduation, and in aggregate by major, the graduate, the graduation rate by major, the availability of financial aid and data like that. And so that is on the higher educational institutions, and institutions like ours are the recipients of that type of information, so counselors can better educate the students as to what direction they want to go and what schools they may want to attend later. And apparently that's moving along and has bipartisan support, so that might be something that we will Spoke about that. The Assembly is at a public hearing on a bill which would prohibit processed foods in federal school subsidized meal programs. The bill that would permit retirees to return to work after taking a 75-day hiatus is still under consideration. And the bill that would require more information concerning referenda and that would limit recurring referenda to every four years, those are still under consideration. So not too much new. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? All right. Upcoming meeting schedule. The only thing we've got, there's four webinars between now and June 18th. And then the Summer Learning Symposium is Friday and Saturday, July 11th and 12th. That is over in Stevens Point. We have one person signed up already. If anybody else can make that, make sure you let Colleen know because registration is required for that. The webinars do not require any registration. That is our upcoming meeting schedule. We have two students that have joined us this evening, our student representatives. And before we get into your program, I do have two questions for you. One, should the board, as we heard over in Italy, they have Saturday school along with Monday through Friday? Is that something we should look at doing, or?
No.
All right. A good sound no.
No.
Perfect. The other question, and all seriousness, you heard, we talked about it a little bit at our last board meeting, and you heard a little bit about it tonight. Your thoughts on cell phones in the school during the day? How disruptive are they for you as far as needing to get on them, so you're thinking about them while you're listening to your teacher in class? You got to hear what your friends are up to, hear, see what they're up to, that sort of thing. What are your thoughts?
Well, obviously, they're, I think they are a disruption. But, I mean, I think, like, they're pretty necessary for communication with, like, parents and stuff and coaches and all that. I don't know what the, like, the middle ground would be or anything. It's not really for me to decide, but...
Okay. Do you have any thoughts?
For me personally, I don't really need my phone. If I ever need anything for communication, I use my watch. But I know that not many students, they just have their phones and don't have a watch. But I think there are definitely some ups and downs, but as a student, I don't have much comment on that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, tell us what's happening at the high school.
So hi, I'm Porter Corbin. I'm a class rep for juniors next year. And this is Hugo Acevedo Sanchez, who, I don't know.
I'm Hugo Acevedo Sanchez. I'm a freshman and an upcoming sophomore class rep for the following year.
So yeah, we've got our senior class reps, Clara Droste, Daniel Broker, and Maran Donzie, Sophia Winfield, me, and Mari Gilbert, Elise Johnson, Bjorn Helsted, and then Hugo. We had three candidates for president, Clara Droste, Daniel Broker, and Maran Donzie, and we elected Clara Droste. For vice president, we had Clara Droste, Mari Gilbert, Maran Donzie, and Sophia Winfield. And we elected Maran Donzie. Candidates for secretary, we had Elise Johnson, Sophia Winfield, and Mari Gilbert, and we voted Mari Gilbert. Candidates for treasurer, we had Elise, Bjorn, and Hugo, and we went with Elise. So we have many new applicants, like myself. This is going to be my first year on leadership, and we will be expecting many more. Freshmen will be able to apply after term one because we know term one is very hectic for freshmen already. So, yeah.
So this following year, to be more efficient with planning and organizing, we decided to come up with teams for our bigger events. So first of all, we have our social media and advertising team. We have our Warrior News and Public Relations Team, our freshman first-day planning team, our Rick and Ron planning team.
Lane's got that.
And our Blood Drive planning team. For this following year, I also add, we are excited to plan over the summer and come up with new ideas for this following school year and just see how it goes.
Any questions?
Are you involved in planning any purely fun activities, or is that a different committee?
Yeah, we are involved in that.
They are the fun committees.
Like, what sort of stuff do you have in mind? Is it something that you want us to know about or not?
Me personally, I'd like, like, a sports event during classes. But, yeah.
Little competition between classes?
Yeah.
I like that.
Thanks for your leadership.
Awesome, yeah. How many days of school left?
Seven.
Supposed to be able to say that pretty quick. Seven. Josh knew.
All right. Thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you for your activity into the leadership team. All right, District Administrator comments?
Yeah, just a couple of things. And I know it's not upcoming, but graduation was last Friday night. Mother Nature cooperated once again. Nellie, Miriam, and Kevin were there to hand out diplomas. And as always, it was a beautiful event. Stands were packed. I had so many people remark that it just felt like there were more people there than ever. I mean, it was standing room only. So always great when we can do that outside. And just thanks to everyone. I don't have a lot to do with planning it. It's high school staff that pulled that all off. So wonderful event. Last day for students is Thursday, June 5th, so coming up. And but with that being said, there's still a lot going on. You know, parking lot was full when you came here tonight because softball had a playoff game that they, that they won. But please, check calendars and schedules on the website and Facebook page. There's a lot of things happening even well after the school year.
All right. Any questions? Thank you for that update. Now I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851E, and this is for an individual employee contract. I would entertain a motion to go into closed.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Andrew Coop.
Here.
Phil Hinkle.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Yes.
Miriam Barbara.
Yep.
Bert Richard.
Here.
Nellie Shire.
Doug Kuchko.
Yes.
Lori Zarbach.
Here.
And Don Kuski.
Phil.
All right.
Oh, please.
So...
Is that that kid that presented?
That's the trash.